Okay, you're ready.
All right.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Going to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the Mayor and Council, City of Bisbee County of Cochise, State of Arizona. Being held on Tuesday, June 12th, June 4th, at 7:00 PM. Our council members. Go home, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill. Councilmember Pete Skinner.
Present.
Councilmember Frank Davis is excused. Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sued.
Here.
Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Anna Klein isn't here yet. Uh, city staff, Stephen Pocken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joelle Lenders, personnel director, Matthew Gurney, public works director, Tim Cox, police chief, Jim Richardson, fire chief, Joe Estes, city attorney.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, for a moment in silence, we'll have a minute of reflection. Um, and then we'll say that the plunger of regions and we'll be saying.
The United States of America. And two Republicans, which is amazing. One need their country. And if it's a call.
So I, uh, don't have any proclamations or real announcements tonight. Just hoping everybody stays safe. We're going to have some heat and some wind. Maybe a little rain this weekend, but please be careful of ours. The big one going on in New Mexico right now, lots of other areas. So please, please be very careful of, uh, any kind of squirts that just come from the night. All right. Moving forward, uh, call the public, uh, we don't have anybody to call. We don't have a person from number four, so. All about them. So we'll move forward. So first order of business will be. Uh, general business and accounts payable. Uh, make a motion to pay account payable on three hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second?
Motion second to pay accounts payable. We have questions.
I agree with that. Well, we often have them. That's even. And so. Um, our. There is, um. And APF, well. That is four hundred. Yeah, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. And it's for station eighty-two. But it says, um, two of three. So is that two of three for this digger station? Or is it for, um, something else? Because it seems kind of high. Or did we miss anything?
Okay, me too. Very likely, um, for engine vendor, yes, we have three different, um, APF vendors set up in our system with three different handles. They don't get such thing. Same. Yeah, there's, it's the one, the one, the one, the one station.
Is that the one one?
No, 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 not the one one.
This seems to end the question. Okay, thank you.
Any other?
I, I have one.
Sure.
Uh, on page two. Uh, account fourteen seventy-four, target gift card steam. I may, I may have missed something from the last meeting for nine thousand eight hundred dollars.
We don't even check which.
Hi, so each year with our Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal, they provide ten thousand dollars in wellness funds. And, but it is a reimbursable. So that is the amount that was submitted for reimbursement to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And it's already been sent and accepted. And so it's almost a pass through of sorts. We will get that back.
Oh, we get it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, just, but thank you.
Sure, go ahead. Uh, on page three, under operational expenses for information systems. It shows the Airbnb stay for a weekly visit for a thousand forty-five.
Yes. Um, our IT, um, person came consultant, thank you, Drew Blank, um, came down from Utah for a week. He comes once a year. And that was the week he came. He spent a year here, or a week here, working on city hall, police department and wherever else. So that was his stay.
So a bunch of new computers.
New comp, there were twenty-three new computers set up. Uh, among other things at the library and everywhere else.
Totally understand. A little curious, why aren't we using local hotels on?
This beat the price by a lot for a week's stay. Yes, sir.
Why not?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, can I go follow up on this? Was brought up. So is this not part of the, the agreement to pay them? Uh, is this part of the deal where we pay for the stay or?
If, if he comes on site, we do, we are required to pay for the stay.
The.
Yes, we're, yes.
Okay, it's not part of the.
No.
I have three one two one six. There's a. And that's the council chamber for two thousand something. All right, look at this. I mean, I'm smiling.
I knew someone was going to bring it up. So the company that bought the, the motherboard for the handicap deal. Held a, um, held that on their card while it was being processed. So that was refunded or should be getting refunded, but yes.
Wow.
Yeah. It was a seven hundred dollar item.
Yeah.
But we had, they held two thousand dollars.
Oh, I thought when you checked into a hotel, they put a little on the.
Yeah. So that's what.
I thought a lot of you like going like.
Yes.
All right. That's amazing. You could buy.
You could buy the doors.
Yes.
We could buy it as built.
As built.
This wasn't that expensive.
We're not going to go there.
We got a better deal.
Uh, anymore, I didn't say anything. So nothing? Okay. I have a motion and a, a second for accounts payable on three hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-one cents. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote aye. Say aye, so move. Item two, who want to be consent agenda, consent agenda, as I was A through D. We have one approval minutes from Tuesday, June 4th. Uh, one appointment to the police and fire advisory committee. We have a liquor license application for Easter seals for their event in one ballpark on September 7th. And we have a pool of our parking facility and way, rate of use permit for the, a hard rock hucking and grilling on the Fourth of July in brewery garage. Do we have any to vote? Seeing now, I'm taking a motion for the consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda items A through D. Second?
Yeah, motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items A through D. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, against aye? I mean, I'm the ayes have it, so. All right, moving on. We do have no old business tonight, so we'll move right into new business. First item is item three is discussion possible decision regarding the appeal of denial for low income qualifications for discounted sewer and trash fees. Quickly, we will, uh. I don't see anybody here to speak to this. So what I'll do is ask our city manager to read his decision and then we can discuss. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Um, uh, prefacing my remarks, um, there is no requirement in the code, um, for a personal, um, appearance, uh, for. What do we call this?
Appeal.
Appeal, thank you. Um, the, uh, in, in just a moment of context, um, the lower price sewer garbage rates on, uh, conferred on people who make below a certain income per year and, uh, based upon criteria that's been in the code for at least one years. Um, and they are required, among other things, to annually come in and prove that they're still eligible for the discounted rate. Okay? Um, the discounted rate, um, in, in this case, uh, this, the, the, what has led up to this appeal has been an ongoing debate over eligibility that started in January. So this has now been going on for six months. Uh, and we had a similar issue with the same individual a year ago and the year before that. Okay? I can't speak any further back because I was working someplace else a year before that. Uh, but this is an ongoing, uh, ongoing issue. So anyway, uh, Mr. Harris, Mr. Jeffrey Harris, went through the process again this year. Um, and he, uh, took it to the point where, uh, not only was it not worth, uh, the amount of money that he was paying, uh, to, to, to support. His part of paying for the wastewater treatment plan. Um, I haven't told it up, but all of the, uh, legal fees have been spent going back and forth with Mr. Harris on points of law. And all the time, uh, that not one but two people in the finance department, uh, have put into going back and forth with, with the opponent. Um, so if water exceeded any amount you could possibly pay, even at the highest rate. So financially, uh, this has been, I'm, well, let's just put it this way, I'm done. Okay? So I want to read into the record so everybody knows, um, exactly, uh, what, uh, what the issue is. And so this is a message from, uh, myself to Mr. Harris dated May 29th. And it reads as follows. Jeff, further to your correspondence, or excuse me, further to the correspondence sent to you by Ron Ward of the finance department, this message is to confirm that you will not be receiving the low income rate on your sewer garbage bill in the next billing cycle. Per city code, you failed to continue to qualify for this rate because you did not verify your income in accordance with the city code. Your failure to qualify has been explained to you repeatedly by both the finance department and the city attorney. Income verification documents include at least two more and more of the following on an annual basis. One, copy of the most recently filed federal income tax return. Two, copy of the most recent W-2 forms. Three, three months of consecutive pay stubs for all employment. Or four, three months of consecutive bank statements for all, all bank accounts. Bisbee's low income rate program is a program established by the city of Bisbee and is not a state or federal mandate. If you wish to supply the finance department with the required documentation indicated above, we can restore your low income rate for the next billing cycle. Thank you, Steve Buck and city manager. Um, half of your agenda packet tonight is Mr. Harris's attempt to circumvent the rules. Okay? What I just read to you out of the city code is the Alpha and the Omega. Nothing else matters. Okay? People from all walks of life and. Every part of the community who get this discount and deserve this discount are more than happy to supply the required information. Okay? And by the way, uh, we want to see this information to verify your income. We don't keep it. Okay? They bring it in, we look at it, we determine they qualify, we hand it back to them. We don't make copies, we don't keep it on file. Total promise. Okay? So, um, any other argument that has been advanced in, 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 in the name of constitutionality, um, or grandfather clauses, or any other argument or obfuscation, I would never object. Um. I haven't said it. Um, is, 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 is strictly, uh, is his way of. Keeping his discount as long as he possibly can. Okay? I'm done. Here. Okay? And if he spent as much time putting garbage from his yard in that free dumpster we gave him. Okay, two months ago, and he hasn't put a thing in it. Instead of spending all this time trying to fight the discount, he'd be wanting to. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll open this up, uh, while this is discussed, I hope we've looked at the twenty some odd pages. I know I've read it all. Um, uh, again, this is a, a discount that I did. People that I qualify and we really want to try and help them. Uh, we also want to make sure that they verify because people that, uh, that we give this to. Sewer system is. A business. I mean, it's an enterprise fund that has to pay for itself. We don't, not the lives of the tax money from the general fund. So we give somebody a discount, that means the price goes up on everybody else. So I think it's only fair that we, we want to do this. We think it's a, it's a, it's, it's, makes sense to help our lower income, um. Residents. So I would hope that. That this is not a big burden, burden, burden on them and that, uh, really. What bothers me about his one part of this is that some sort of a W-2 from two thousand nine. So what we're looking at is this has to be verified every year. And if you go back ten years or more and say, this is my last job and this is what I paid, that doesn't really bring you up to, so that's why I would, uh, my favor would be to agree with the city manager and his denial. When all you really would have to do is bring in the last few statements of these banks. Now I'm going to do that if I have to. So I'm going to open it up for further discussion about that.
Yeah, I would, I would like to, um, I, I'll applaud the city manager for holding this. Uh, because we cannot just, uh, be bullied into this because there's others who are, who are following on this, this program and someone that has the time and I read through this. Uh, I think we will be, uh, untrue to the rest of the people who do qualify. So I am with you, Steve, on this, and I think based on everything I've said, uh, this is basically just trying to bully us to accept it and, 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 uh, we will have to follow the rules. The rules apply to everyone. So that's my fault in this.
Well. Well, from my perspective, there's four requirements that they're being asked of me. At least two of those requirements. He's been notified many, many times, it appears. Uh, but it has not provided the, the paperwork necessary for you to make the judgment that he, the decision that he'd like. Uh, as you said. The rules are right there. And, uh, I agree.
Anyone else?
I agree as well. I support this. They all agree.
Well, then I'll take a motion.
If I move to. I'll vote three or. Or five.
No, just uphold.
Hold it.
I move to uphold the decision of the city manager to deny the low income qualification for discounted sewer and trash fees.
I second.
Yeah, motion second. To uphold the decision of the city manager to deny the low income qualification for discounted sewer and trash fees for Mr. Harris. Go home, please.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Skinner.
Aye.
Uh, councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. That's as you know.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on, item four. Item four is discussion of possible approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Bisbee and Naco Sanitary District for building wastewater connection and service at Camp Naco. Um. Mr. Norman. Yeah, and then if you present it, then I'll ask, um, we have one person signed up to speak.
Oh, I think I'll, your, it's my first.
Yeah, you present it and I'll.
Uh, well, this is, uh, is, uh, it's by, um, memorandum of understanding, uh, between the city and, um, Naco Sanitary District, uh, to provide payment for the trash fees and the, uh, um, regular, um, use of the sewer system. So, uh, we'll be connecting to the Naco Sanitary District Sewer. Um, they don't charge, like send out a monthly bill, similar to what the city does for the sewer fees. Uh, what they do is they have a, a tax assessment based on, uh, property tax. And, uh, the issue was that because, uh, city of Bisbee owns Camp Naco property and the city being municipality, we're not subject to a property tax. So through the normal tax process, it wasn't a mechanism to compensate the, the sanitary district. So we worked with, uh, Mr. Estes to, um, end with, uh, I'm just sanitary district, putting, putting together a memorandum of understanding that would, uh, provide a, a vehicle for, uh, reimbursing the Naco Sanitary District. So basically follows the same, um, taxing schedule that all of the rate payers, uh, pay. It uses the assessed value of the property. And, yeah, taxable rate, taxable value of the property. And the fee for the Naco Sanitary District is a little over five point eight percent of the, uh, taxable value of the, uh, property. Uh, in this case, the current assessment for the Camp Naco property is, uh, one hundred and six thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. And, uh, compilation for the, uh, annual fee for the sanitary district would be six hundred and twenty-six per year based on the current value. Now that fee, um, will be adjusted as properties improve and the assessed value of the property increases, then our assessment in the same period district will increase as well. But it basically sets it up the same way that all of their other rate payers are. Paying their sewer fees.
Thank you. Now. Today, we have, we like to come up.
My name, I am Steve A. I am chairman of the board of the Naco Sanitary District. And, uh, say that we unanimously approve of this. We think it's a wonderful idea and we want to thank your attorney and everybody for coming up. This was actually your initial offer. We could, and now it's perfect. Um, to assure you, we're working on evidence to reduce our tax rates back to tax value where district went up a little this year, so our tax base can be a little sort of five, I mean, six, something. That's a good thing. Um, other issues, and you know, I mean, I appreciate all you're doing. I'm an elected official. Thank goodness, I only have a couple of things to look over and like you guys who have been here. It's a thank goodness I don't have to get hurt yet. And I learned in the early, but yeah. But anyway, back to what I was saying, um, and it isn't just, and hopefully it's all a good work for a lot of cooperations in our community. Our community has a lot of needs. Um, as an elected official, I've been asked to do some things for our community and our sanitary district has been done. Basically, a local elected representatives for this border area on the border environment that stands for it, impacting the Sonora. And you know about Sonora this weekend? And actually, the, a question, you know, about, um, the, the science book, she did a presentation that's wonderful. I mean, you guys have been doing great there. She also had an ask. About, no, I agree. Um, well, Melanie and we're here, but I guess every name you've lived in, yeah, some people are, she had to bring, well, she actually did the presentation, but actually it was great. Um, she didn't have an ask to approve that type of an organizational thing to the area. And I would like to let everybody know we are actually working on that with those. I want to bring the heads of the EVA, USC and everything into this area. They want to take a tour of the, some of the colonias, Naco. Um, they want to take a look at what's going on out in Murray Plain because, you know, suddenly we're ordering to be straight and stuff like that. One of the other things we are working on and we're almost completed with all the process and actually have a thirty thousand dollar grant on the way and threat three hundred thousand dollar hardware grant we get applied for was to reconstruct our wastewater treatment line because of all of the extra stuff we're going to go on. Although it can handle the capacity and feel that we need to put a modern system and that'll treat that affluent to a, a, a modern standard. Um, our city, our, our community, even if we're producing enough, that will include probably until fifteen acres upon, preventing the use of constructed weapons and stuff like that. Part of this, though, is that we are representative of the area. You are part of this area. You qualify for a lot of these funds. We understand your wastewater system is at end of life. You guys, an issue going on, you've got a poor system. They have offered us, because we don't have to pay any matching grants. If the cooperative effort, they would go ahead and provide the funds to build a wastewater treatment system on our property that would be everybody's. You know, hook you up to it. Or.
A lot.
Okay, but I, I made the, we're part of, we're, we're basically laying, hook you up to it, do all of these things and take your, and hopefully, because it's environmental weapons funded, if you weren't afraid, there is a possibility that you get your royalties repaid. If they're all in the works. These are, they're all possibilities. And as soon as we get everything going, we'll bring it into the future, but please, go on your side as well. Thank you.
Go home. Thank you, just for one. Steve, um, what I would really like to see happen, excuse me, um, because there's a lot of information floating around and most of it's wrong. Um, and, and it's the world we live in, okay? Um, I have been here eleven of the last eighteen years and I have never once met with the Naco sanitation district. Nor has anyone from Naco sanitation district made an attempt to talk with us.
Well, we understand all that. We figured that out.
What we need, what we need to do before we do anything else is we need to just sit down, introduce ourselves to each other and lay out what assets we do have and what condition they are in. And then go from there because the character, character, the characterizations of our wastewater treatment system are grossly misrepresented. And I think that, uh, we, we need to straighten out misre, the misinformation first before we can move forward to do anything under any certain.
Almost any inspection about it all.
And I would.
Misinformation about us.
Yeah. And I, I would welcome that opportunity. But, yeah, only a problem. Thank you, sir. I think there could be a good synergy here because this will help bring tourism and more people to Naco and, and, and it will lift all loads. So I'm, of course, in favor of this. It's a fifty-two dollar a month, uh, sewer bill, much like ours, which are forty, eight, whatever. So pretty close. Uh, I'm going to chief. Um, any other comments on item four? Is it five? Yeah, four. I'm still there. Anybody else? Uh, there's an motion?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between city of Bisbee and Naco Sanitary District for billing wastewater connection and service fees to Camp Naco.
Second?
For the motion second to approve the memorandum of understanding between city of Bisbee and Naco Sanitary District for just the, for the building at least one. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote aye. Hear it done, you guys have it. So move. All right. Thank you, Steve. Um, moving on to item five. This is discussion of possible approval of resolution R-24-12. This is a resolution, the mayor and council, city of Bisbee County of Cochise fixing living and assessing the amount to be raised by the city of Bisbee for, for property tax and fixating, fixing and determining the property tax rate for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five visible year and providing for some of it. Um, this, yeah, there are this vote. We have, uh, what you have to say. We had a, uh, open meeting the other day, another last time, and what?
Mayor Council, this is the, um, resolution to increase the, uh, tax rate to one, basically three dollars and sixteen cents for every one hundred thousand dollars of property tax.
I think three dollars, one and seven, and a penny.
Oh, you're right, three dollars and sixteen cents. Well, three dollars and sixteen cents, go round the house. Well, three dollars and one cents around the basket. Um, this will bring in, um, one million three hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand pounds of, 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 of.
Can you just make a clarification, sorry? Can I ask her?
Yes.
Uh, can you, the clarification, tell us, uh, what, what was it and what's the increase percentage wise, dollar wise? He's saying it's gonna be three dollars and a two cents. What was it before? So people know, have an idea.
No, it's an additional bylaws and ninety-one cents. Uh, it's kind of the increase in, it includes the increase in the property value.
I understand that, but what, what, what was it before? It's, it's now, just permission. I mean, what was it last year versus now? So we can get an idea. I know you're saying three dollars more. So what percentage does this represent? Somebody has. I mean, just, I want to get an idea. I'm attempting to figure it out. Just. Two percent? Less than two percent?
It was, I did, but I printed off several different.
Okay, I saw my clarification. So I'd say what was increased by two percent.
It didn't raise five dollars.
Yeah, it's a two percent increase.
It's a two percent increase.
It's a, the maximum we can increase each year is two percent.
So you increase it by two percent.
But it's an increase not of the percent, but of how much you would be paying. Which will include the increase in your property value in there. So it's not like, yeah, this will be my two percent.
If, if I have a house and I was paying, now I'm going to pay three dollars. What was I paying last, before the three dollars? Was it like?
Two dollars and.
Okay, so that's, that's all I want.
Yeah, we're paying three dollars for an hundred and before, which is now two percent higher than what we would pay.
Okay, so it's two percent.
Yeah, that's what I understand will allow.
Okay.
Am I right? Once you want to say. But we also get an increase in people's evaluations going. So that one's totally simple.
Yeah.
Or new construction.
Right, that's correct.
Any more questions? You know, last week, okay, I'll entertain a motion for.
I move to approve the resolution R dash twenty-four dash twelve. Fixing, levying and assessing the amount to be raised by the city of Bisbee from property taxation and fixing and determine the mountain tax rate in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year in the amount of three dollars and two cents or one hundred dollars of assessed valuation and providing sever.
I second.
We have a motion second for the resolution R dash twenty-four twelve as emphasized. Um, we do, yeah. We'll call.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Skinner.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suede.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye.
All right. Sit down on item six. This will be uh, discussion of possible approval of a Naco Heritage Alliance executive director job announcement. Land use.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, tonight.
Paying attention to the man.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this evening I am presenting the Naco Heritage Alliance executive director job announcement. This job announcement was, um, result of board development consultant, Donna Baldwin, which was contracted to take care of this. And she has completed the job announcement. And the job announcement has been reviewed and accepted by the city of Bisbee, the Camp Naco staff and the Naco Alliance Board of Directors. Thanks for that. It's the attachment for review.
Brooks is on, I don't know if you can hear him.
He, he, you should be able to hear him. Yes, he's here. Yeah. In case he, I don't know if you want to comment, Brooks.
Just Brooks, do you want to comment?
Uh, no, I just, I'm here to answer any questions that council has. Thank you for the opportunity to present this.
You bet. Any questions, we can direct them to him.
Yeah, I have a question on the qualification and education. I don't see, oh, I must, if I'm missing it, just bring it to my attention. What, uh, the degree requirement? Uh, for such a position, I think that's, it should be at least bachelor, a bachelor or a master, right? Maybe it's somewhere else. It's going to be somewhere else. I'm missing it. You can direct me.
Yeah, I think there was discussion that there could be a wide range of educational opportunities, but I agree that there should be something there and I can make that correction.
Yeah. Okay, that's where, if you don't have it, I'll, I'll recommend that we, we include it. But for such a position, I think at least, at least a bachelor, not more.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, based based on everything that's in here, uh, similar to a position description, um, the, uh, my personal belief is the appropriate degree requirement would be a bachelor's degree is in a compatible.
Yeah.
Uh, field of study. What, however HR people say that.
Or where it says plus five, or five years of Naco, if it's just one hand.
Yeah.
Either one.
What would you say four?
It's plus nine. Yeah.
I, I agree. It should be a plus and.
Okay, that's, I saw that in there and I want to make sure.
Yeah, plus, uh, degree and it's.
Plus five plus.
Plus five.
Plus five.
Yeah.
I'm a juror, a doctor, right?
Well, it doesn't have to be a doctor, but we need at least some basic qualification. That's a, that's an important position that, uh, and, you know.
Yeah, it's been a lot, a lot of money.
Yes.
Any other comments or, uh, questions? All right, um, we'll make some motion with, you would include that part of your motion. I would, I appreciate it. Somebody wants to make that.
Okay, uh, I move to approve the Naco Heritage Alliance executive director job announcement including, uh, requirement, uh, at least a bachelor of science or, or higher in, uh, in education, college grad. And I'll let you guys put the order in.
Right, I'll second that. Well, I want to second to approve the Naco Heritage Alliance executive director job with men who had a bachelor's degree as part of the qualification.
It's a minimum. You know what, minimum.
Always in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the name. Hearing none, the audience have it. So move.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You bet.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brooks.
Thank you.
All right.
On to item seven. This is discussion of possible approval of an inter-indeca with A D O T for a community connection feasibility study. Mr. Public Speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so I have before you, uh, so this is the I G A with A dot with, over the community connections feasibility study. So this is not the, by the way, this is everything that hasn't been figured out, hasn't been put together. So this is what, uh, this feasibility study is going to be about. And tonight, this is just an I G A, uh, that's coming forth to you. Uh, this doesn't have, um, with this, um, we've already, uh, the mayor has brought this, uh, that we were going to put, it was eleven thousand, uh, as a grant match for this project. Uh, and then I think it was twenty-five thousand.
From the city.
From the county that are going to this. But, but this is just I G A to work with A dot ourselves, um, Bisbee Bytheway, uh, and Coaches County is involved in this as well. Uh, any questions or comments?
So a lot of this is in the county. That's why they pointed up the twenty-five thousand.
Yes.
And then ours would be from Lowell basically out to edge of town towards.
Yeah, so this will be.
So we're putting eleven thousand, they're putting twenty-five to do the same.
This will be looking at, um, where we want, where a different path can go, really diving into, um, whether it's to be on the street, on, on a path separate from the street, really doesn't dive into.
It also includes San Jose, just so we know that. That's also, we're not just looking to go to Naco. It's also times goes great out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it ties around town. And it ties together.
To school also, so that gives us bright lights to schools.
Yes, if I can just add one thing, this just came, just came down, caught the press, three o'clock this afternoon. Uh, one of my partners sent me an email letting me know that there's been, when other I G As with A dot, there's been an issue where there's certain language that was negotiated back in two thousand and sixteen that has kind of gradually been removed from the I G As and it has been agreed that that language is supposed to be in the I G As. And so what we're recommending is that Bill Sims, who is the attorney for the, uh, the risk pool, uh, offers a service. He reviews all these I G As at no cost. That with the motion that it just be with, with any recommended, uh, changes from, from Bill Sims in, uh, in line with the requirements that, uh, or just any recommendations, any recommended changes from, from Bill Sims, just to make sure that the I G As in line with the, the agreement that they have with the league.
Could we do recommended changes from the risk pool?
Yes.
Rather than Bill, yeah, since he works for risk pool.
Yes.
Okay, um, so once that happens, then we'd be signed.
Yeah, but that way we don't have to come back, but I just want to make sure that
Yeah.
that the risk pool has, their attorney looked this over to make sure that this issue is addressed and we're not necessarily.
A dot so much.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, go ahead.
Matt, how long will this study take? Um.
I think it's going to be about a year of study. Cause they're, they put everything together. Uh, it's going to be six, possibly a year.
Okay.
Well, once you enter into it, then they're going to tell you how long, once you decide to go, you will tell you how long this.
Uh, it really depends on how the, the committee putting together how long, what.
What, what, what do you need to do with the.
Yeah, the guidelines of.
We're just doing, we're just doing the study. None of the work is being done.
No.
No.
So there's not any anticipated work till, well, a year or.
Oh, yeah, a lead month.
We have to have the study in order to put in the grants.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'd say, once this is done, this will allow us, is the stepping, uh, the steps will get us to the grants.
Yeah. Any other, um.
You know, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Matt, um, I'm going to presume, um, that A dot will actually hire an engineering consultant firm to do the actual.
Yes.
They're, they're not doing that. They're going to hire someone.
A dot is not, A dot will be involved with it, but.
We will and Coaches County will.
Yeah.
Um, cause, uh, it kind of doesn't say that here, but that's what they always do. Um, now the, the, like way feasibility study, which I came back with the tail end of, uh, wasn't done a year. It was longer than a year.
It was, well, for the study.
For the actual feasibility study itself, with Kimberly Moore.
That's Kimberly Moore.
Yeah. I mean, I came in kind of in the middle of it, but it, I recall that it took more than a year and a half.
And I go up and try to see what you said, but I don't see for this exactly if they have a, an engineering firm or not. It doesn't say on what I've read.
I mean, whoever has this is, this is just the match because the actual grant was six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So we had a six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar study.
Correct, yeah.
Well, a lot of eleven thousand.
Which, which further makes me believe that it's going to take more than a year.
Yeah, it's twenty-seven miles. I don't think these things, that run along at their own rate. Okay, thank you. Yeah. Uh, any other questions? Comments? The none. entertain a motion with the changes to add the risk pool review. So I'll just do, I, I move to approve the inter-indeca with A dot for the community connections feasibility study after review, with a review, um, of this.
Second.
I'm motion second to approve, enter into a I G A with A dot for the community connection feasibility study. Always in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the name. Hearing none, the audience have it. So move.
Thank you.
So, um, I'm going to move the city manager's report up, John, until we, uh, move on to item eight.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I would like to report tonight is that between now and the executive session, if we could have a five minute break so that, uh, well, Mr. Norman and the city attorney can converse on my computer. Is that okay? Well, it's at your call.
All right, that's your report.
That's my report.
Yeah, that's your, all right, uh, we're going to, uh, take a five minute recess and then we'll come back and go into executive session. Can I take a, I'll just take a motion now of going to executive, connect the session in five minutes.
Second.
Second, all of the members can find that saying aye.
Aye.
All in the name. Hearing none, the audience have it. So move.